Offer versus serve. And they come out of the kitchen. But then they only are required two more components. They could have an orange, an apple, and a milk. And somebody in the government will consider that a reimbursable meal. My department is driven on the reimbursement. So we're gonna live by that because that's what we know. You want to change that, we can. But there's so much more involved to it. And you've got to consider the price you're gonna charge for it.
And that's why I think we should have a parent forum. Because for me, I might be have a different view than the majority. And my big thing is we should hear from the town and the parents and the kids. So right this minute might be a hard time to change it. But we're not always gonna be serving lunches in the classroom. We shouldn't want go to change it.
I can't wait.
My day.
We should be prepared.
So I think Jerome, how many three lunch costs a lunch? Jerome?
Three.
Well, usually.
Two seventy one.
Okay. No, but actually it's gonna be three because once we go back to the normalness. Alright, so they're gonna require us. Totoka Valley is going to be three. Intermeat School's gonna be three twenty five. High School's gonna be?
Three fifty.
Okay, and for three fifty, you're getting protein, drink, a vegetable.
Fruit.
Fruit. And?
Grain.
And grain.
But you can't get.
Same as typical. So the question that comes being wasted is the fruits and the vegetables because they're the required item.
Right, so the fruits and the vegetables are getting thrown out. So people are left with the protein and the grain and they can't even get more of the protein and the grain. So they're getting a.
But we.
It's true. They can't get extra aliments.
So for three fifty, and even if they go through the line and we put the food onto their tray and they say to you, I don't want it, you can't take it back.
No.
It's gonna.
It's gone.
It's gonna, it can't go to the horse farm. The apple.
Right.
It's done.
So you're looking at your, your cost analysis is for what would be considered a lunch that would meet the standard that we're looking to achieve for the price of what children will be able to pay. And then the difference of that is if the board is looking to take that on, what does that number become? So you have to take out your free reduced reimbursement. You have to take your commodities out because you're not gonna get free reduced, right? Without your commodities. So then you're gonna have to purchase all of your, you know, the list of things you're gonna have to purchase.
I think what I would want to do with the direction you're speaking about is approach a school district that tried to run that. And a couple of them come to mind, but I haven't ever contacted them.
Yeah.
And they were Greenwich.
Yeah.
And Newtown. Towns in the Fearford County area.
Money towns.
Well, first, why don't we talk to our parents and see if this is something they want?
Madison has a, has a kind of like.
Hybrid?
Blend, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, they don't, they may not operate their national school lunch program at the high school level.
I thought it was all or nothing. That's what I've been told everywhere. You have to have it, it's all or nothing for a district.
I'm not aware of that.
Cause I've asked this every year and I've been told every year that it's all or nothing.
It's, it's all or nothing if you want to pick up all those bonus things like we participate in the healthy food certification. If we want to get that ten cents per meal, we have to make sure all schools are participating. I don't, I do not believe.
Okay.
The school lunch program, it has to have all the schools in the district participating.
Okay.
I'm sure you can pull some out. But I can't contact somebody.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Here's what I believe I know. They didn't work out. And they went back to the national school lunch program.
Well, cause it's easier.
Well, cause I think it's leading money to cost.
So your, your price point is what's the comfort level of the people in North Branford to say when I go in? So if I go to the drive through McDonald's.
That's important.
It's the drive in tractor.
Democrat.
And I'm paying twelve dollars to drive through McDonald's to eat. And that's not unrealistic.
Right, that's.
It still is. Per person.
Right, no, you're right.
For a family of four, or five, or six, in North Branford, in this communication, what are you willing to pay for a lunch if we were to go to a, not a, not a processed chicken patty, but a chicken breast? And then Michael, the breakdown will have to be, in order to do this, we're gonna, the board is gonna need a number based upon the feedback from the parents of what is that threshold? What's that number that they will pay? Because if you're not gonna do it for three fifty a meal, I think we know that.
No, no.
So what is that number with the board having a offset?
You can't buy a chicken breast for three fifty.
But first, before we even go down the road of financials, we should have a parent meeting asking them what they want. Because if they don't want it at all, then it's a shot of thing. And you know, the board in North Branford and lunches aren't about shot. Or even the board, like we represent everybody. And so it's majority rules, like I've always said that, it's majority rules. So we get at forums, we can send out some surveys, we can make them school specific. Because I don't know, maybe TBS is like, those French Postecs are rocking. And we want that and we want our mac and cheese. And you could stick our apple on our plate and maybe we'll eat it because maybe it's sliced and they're good, right? And then maybe the high school is like, we will pay ten dollars because after school, we're all getting in our cars and going to John and Maria's down the street to buy a sub anyway. So we might as well just eat in school. Like, I, I don't know, but I think we should figure out where our points are and where we need to change, if we need to change, and who wants change. And then once we decide, okay, well, they do want to change, then we say, okay, well, these are the kinds of food we can offer. This is how much you would have to pay. Are you still interested? So we do it in a tiered way.
What do you have to do with the free or reduce people?
I don't know, maybe there's scholarships, maybe we figure it out. Maybe, I don't know, but I haven't gotten that far yet. I think first you have, you, you, you tear it down.
Can I ask you, um, your food service professional, we're just banging around a bunch of ideas. What are you picking up from this?
There's a couple of things. I know that, now, I worked for private schools, so it wasn't endless budget. But I had the parents who are constantly coming to me saying that they wanted their kids to eat healthier. And we had a freezer that was stocked with processed stuff. And, and half of it, that's where the, our budget was. So when I, I was always hired to, um, come in and clean places up. So I would get rid of, I would sell everything in the freezer and say, okay, we're getting rid of it all. And then bring in fresh products. Part of it was, was slowly bringing it in and to get kids to eat it. So, um, the lower levels, of course, were harder because they're very picky. But we got this, them involved in the schools and in the, um, picking out the stuff and naming products after, after, um, uh, after their teacher and that kind of stuff with their class. Um, as far as the budget goes, the hardest part, I think, was what we were serving it on, because that was part of the cost. Um, styrofoam, we couldn't ever, we couldn't use in the schools. So, um, it did allow us to serve other things because things hold a little bit better outside of the styrofoam, like you said. Um, so money did go into that. Um, we did use a lot of recyclables so that, um, at the time we were able to do, this is before COVID, so things were a little bit different. Um, but you, um, I was able to get people that, and train them. And it was about training them how to break down a chicken breast so that this money could go a lot farther, right? And take one chicken breast and make it into four servings. And then have the size and have it be hearty so that they felt full. But we did do it with the parents and the kids involved. I mean, the parents, of course, for the, um, younger kids specifically. But with the, um, older kid, uh, with the older kids and the, um, and high schoolers, they got involved too. Cause they said, I mean, they have an opinion, they know what they like to eat, they know what they choose. And that's the way we did it. And we pretty much made it work based off of that. Again, we had an endless budget, so things were.
Huge difference. I mean, just sit there taking chicken breasts and to pay somebody to cut it into four or five chi. I mean, that's more people, that's.
It's more work and it's more training and it's, instead of just putting something.
Were you involved with contract food service companies?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that's a comment that I'd like to make. The direction that we're looking at might be best served by running it through a contract food service company. It's just my, I've always felt that since I've gotten here for this size school district. But that's my opinion. Okay? Serious. If you want the most efficient, you can invest, create a contract.
So first, before we investigate a contract.
Before we start a conversation with a union, this is a legal conversation.
But before we even do that, can we start at step one and ask the parents?
And you're asking me about what I have.
Yeah, but like, I wrote down contract, but like, first I wanted to see if it's even something that all the parents are interested or if it's targeted, right? Like if it's just the high school and the middle school that are really having the issue. Or if they're not having the issue. I mean, I, I, I'll be, I'll admit it, I'm mostly around kids in the gym, kids that are athletic, ki, you know, friends of my kids' friends, you know, so on. I, I, I see a certain population of kids and while I might see maybe a hundred, there's five hundred in high school, right? So I'd like to hear from all of them and their parents. So like, I would say that if we can have a forum in each of the schools and then follow up with a survey, that's the best way to go, because that's the best way to get the pulse. And I, I really feel always with everything, like you, you should be getting involvement from our, our parents. I mean, we're elected and we're elected by them. So we're here to deliver their voice essentially and I, I want to hear it. I mean, right, I mean, the kids are minors, right? So, you know, they can vote, but I just want to hear it.
Going back to Kim's comment too about staff training. You've got to remember what our labor pool is gonna look like too and the quality of staff that we have. It's, it's not like we have professional chefs in our kitchen. They are food service workers. And unless you're requiring, for instance, the manager, because they're supposed to be a cook manager, unless they're a qualified individual supervising their kitchen, it's, it's a tough road to prepare from scratch cooking that stuff.
So who's, can I ask who is in there now, like you're, the eight in the kitchen?
Each school has a manager.
Okay, and the manager's qualifications are?
They have a serve state certification.
Okay.
And one out of my three is a qualified cook.
Okay.
So basically that are they thawing things out in?
Pardon?
Are they thawing things out and cooking them? Like it, so they don't cook from scratch, so how is that cooked?
A certain amount of things are made from scratch, you know, we make pizzas from scratch.
Yeah, yeah.
Today, we had beef burritos that we made from scratch. Two days ago was buffalo chicken and that. So. And one thing that's kind of hard for me to swallow is we have the line at the high school, for instance, on the right that serves fella cheeseburger, hot spicy chicken patty, chicken patty. Then on the left, we have the daily item that would be prepared from, we'll call it from scratch, but not necessarily all the time. You still can't take it away from them. Over here on the right side, the participation is three to one for the scratch cooking. It's just insane.
So they like the scratch cooking, the stuff?
No, they like the.
They like the burgers and the chicken.
They like the chicken patty.
Oh, yeah, they like the cheeseburgers and the french fries. Yeah, I would guess that's what they like. They don't want the vegetables and the whatever.
Um, I'm just.
Do you mind if I do a field trip at each school?
Pardon?
Do you mind if we do field trips at each school?
I've been welcoming that for years.
I mean, I, I hear it, I mean.
You're getting, wouldn't. I think, and I've, I've put this out before, I would love for you to come in and have.
But I don't want to be announced. I want to come.
Yeah, listen, you're not gonna get, not gonna get beef tips whether you announce it or not. So I would say, come in blind because there's not gonna be any filet. Uh, and the administrators will gladly, I, I know they see me dining frequently in the schools, um, so I.
And I'm not ordering to go because I know those are good.
I never go. I sit, meet, went on, and I'm, and again, you'll be open for, Michael, I know you would gladly have people. I'd love to have you come in and see the kitchens that they work in.
Yeah.
Well.
Kim, I'd like you to do that especially.
Mike, I don't mean to extend this conversation further, but one or the other, she's there in the current climate. What's the situation with supply on, say, gluten free, dairy free options for those allergen students, if any?
It's, uh, are you asking how much are they providing?
Kind of two-part question there, right? Is it, is it, is it available and if so, is it?
It's available on a very minimum amount of gluten free.
Right.
Especially. We keep track of all the kids that are lactose intolerant or have Crohn's disease. But, um, gluten free is very difficult. We cannot get products through our vendors.
Right.
I buy a minimum of gluten free products at Big Y.
So it's like a specialty order type that I gotta run out and get it kind of deal? Well, Mike, I don't think that's. And, and thank you for that. You're gonna, you're gonna try.
I just wanted to say something.
Thank you.
A good example was one that just started on Monday or Tuesday at Totoka Valley. We're, we're offering a daily salad. But what it's doing for me is it's allowing me to offer a gluten free roll with that meal to help facilitate these people. Is it a 504 that they file?
Yeah.
For, um, to meet the needs for the ones that have to have a special diet. So that gives me a little leeway. As far as my elementary school, Jerome, I have the ones there. I have, a good example was Eevee Karani. I had a close conversation with her because her children were gluten free.
We'll just, yeah, stay.
And they had to make sure that the teacher marked on the meal order guide that they were getting a meal. And then we would just provide the hamburger, which wouldn't have gluten.
Right.
On a gluten free roll. But it's very minimal, very minimal.
So we, Mike works independently with families that have, of course, have needs. And with the inventory will go out to Big Y and other Restaurant Depot to, to pick up and purchase because there, there is.
Big Y is really my outlet for, for.
I'm just saying in general.
I go to Restaurant Depot quite often just because when you order things now, they do not come in.
Yeah, and then you're.
And then you're sitting there.
With no lunch, yeah.
Mike, I have a question. You said you're offering the hamburger patty to gluten free students. But I have gluten free in my family and a lot of the hamburgers have the pre-processed ones that come over.
It's a hundred percent beef patty from gluten. Doesn't have gluten.
Okay, a lot of them do.
The one that we use, it's, it's a government patty ninety ten.
So I think next steps is we could either invite people to come to a board meeting to talk about this or we can have individual.
I would, I would do individual school, Michael, to go in. And, and then you've, you have the target audience that you want with the age appropriate and versus a mix of people coming in in one night with a full agenda. We could easily do four, four nights and go in and do that. And we'll advertise it and put it out. And, and we'll do it.
Does the board want to come and, come into the kitchen during the lunch period?
Yes, they do.
Yeah, we're going to, we're gonna do that too. So we have a few next steps. One, we want to hear from parents and students. And then we're gonna, whoever wants to, I mean, it's not mandatory, but like do a kitchen tour and, uh, lunch. And I mean, I remember like when my kids were little, you got invited to lunch, right? Like.
Yeah, we're not doing that right now with COVID.
Yeah, yeah, right, like, do you remember, I remember.
We had a lot of that at Jerome Harrison in Totoka Valley.
Right.
For COVID.
For COVID.
Unfortunately, the parents were bringing in packages from, um, it's, uh, Nikki D.
And we do have a wellness committee, uh, under Dr. Welch's leadership that worked really hard to make sure that all snacks, all things that come in, uh, meet the standard that, um.
See, I guess my point is, I don't care about the standard. I want kids to eat, like I love.
No, but I'm saying we're not bringing in Halloween candy and passing it out for birthdays.
Well, I'm glad you're not bringing in Halloween candy.
Well, that was, that's what, it happened years ago.
I just, what concerns me is that kids, if kids aren't eating it at home, they're not going to eat at school. Like, that's my thing. But I mean, you're not a good, you're not a wizard that all of a sudden they don't eat broccoli at home and they're gonna eat broccoli at school. It's not gonna happen. Um, so anyway, let's not meet this horse anymore, so to speak. We'll put up our next step. We'll, Scott, will you schedule those or have the trainers?
No, you're gonna do drop-ins. You're gonna do drop-ins.
We'll do drop-ins, but I want forums as well scheduled.
Oh, no, yeah, we'll, we'll look at a time when, you know, with the administrative team, what works for them for your calendars.
I'd like it within the next quarter though, you know, within the next quarter.
To do it.
I don't want it to be an endless, you know, by the, you know, the next three months.
So.
It's gonna be interesting. The, the national school lunch program is an interesting animal.
I'm sure it is.
That's all I can tell you.
I'm sure there's many.
To go down a different path, anything's possible, but.
Mike, I'm not mentioning, not easy is not good for me. I, I like to do what's best.
But I just worry about the money that'll be spent. That's what I.
Well, well, think about it because you know, we also are responsible to the taxpayers, right? So we have to reach out to those taxpayers and say, this is what it will look like. Do you want better food? This is what it will look like. If not, this is what it looks like. These are your paths. Which one do you want to choose? Now, it's not, it's our job to give them those choices. That's what we do. And if I know kids are hungry and they're not eating and throwing it out, it's not helpful. If that's what parents choose, I could just send my kid dynamos and dynamo at school or whatever, you know, and her lunch table if I so choose. I'm not gonna do that because that's kind of jerky. But I'm just saying, you know, everybody has a choice on how they want to manage it. But if we can manage it as a district and figure it out and be creative, let's do it. If we can, at least we said we tried it and we looked at a lot of different angles. So when people say, why can't we do this? Well, we had the parent forums and there was an interest. Or we had the parent forums and we could only deliver these items because of the cost. Or, you know, we kept the school reimbursement thing at these schools because it made sense. But we took away at, at the middle school because it didn't, like, it's not an all or nothing. It's about creativity and finding better. And that's what I think we all need to strive for, whether it's school testing, whether it's school lunches, whether it's capital projects, it's always striving for better and not being complacent. And I think we're a little complacent with our lunches, not because of you, but because of the situation we're put in because of COVID and reimbursement and everything else. So let's, let's kind of, they can look their way. And we have new board members who can add some spice to us, you know, and different things. So that's all I'm saying. So we're gonna get those meetings, we'll.
Was that a pond of spice?
Yeah, you see, right? Okay, so thank you for your time. I appreciate it and I appreciate your feedback. You gave us a lot to think about. Okay. Moving on.
Okay. Bruce, can you fire up the? We're gonna pass out the PowerPoint. So feel free to write notes on, on your, on your PowerPoint.
Thank you.
Especially for the new members, um, if you have questions that you think about driving home tonight or when you're awake and you, you're thinking about something that was presented. I'll put out an email, uh, well, Bruce, actually, we have to establish the new email accounts for our two, two board members.
He did my book.
Hold on, oh, good. Okay, so, so then, just so they understand process. So any, any questions that you may have, uh, they can go back to the board chair so that everyone can, can view them. And then at our next meeting, we'll entertain the question so everyone sees what the questions are. Okay, does that make sense? Uh, so tonight what we do is we do a, a real broad overview, uh, of the, of the budget process. And then, uh, you'll be charged with finalizing a number that you're comfortable as a board moving forward to the town council. Okay, now ultimately the town council determines our operational budget. They control the amount in the capital budget for projects that they want to take on and so forth. Okay?
They can always kick it back if they don't like it.
They can always kick it back. Correct. All right, that being said, we're gonna turn the lights and then you might want to slide just so you can see. Now, I'm not going to read every slide. I would not do that to you. So I'm gonna quickly, because I know, I'm laughing as I say that. Uh, slide number one, your pages are numbered. Uh, so if you do a question, the bottom right hand side, it's really small, it's PowerPoint, this is what you get. Um, when Mr. Williams is set to go, you're gonna, you're gonna see, you know, our overview, our vision and our mission clearly stated, that's part of our strategic plan. And it's been developed over time with input from the school and community, the vision of excellence, as we just spoke about. Student achievement, programming for our students. And my biggest thing is the learning environment and school safety. You'll hear that over and over again. Our mission, strong learning environment, again, excellence, climate, to be twenty first century citizens. Next slide, please. Our core beliefs, we ground everything in all children have the ability to learn at different paces and different levels. And we're here to service all of our pre-K through twenty-two-year-old students. We believe all students have abilities and talents that we need to bring out and recognize and develop. And then again, that last line, safe, respectful, challenging environment. Safety, safety. Next slide. Moving forward, we have been challenged over the last twenty-plus months with COVID. It has had a great impact on the emotional wellbeing of our students and staff and our parents and our board members. Uh, we've all been challenged continuously with decisions that we've had to make. If we're staying open, going remote, um, handling just a myriad of things that have been thrown our way. And I think we've done a really great job, um, in getting to this point. And we're looking forward to normalcy and moving forward, uh, as we, as we move along. So the balance, uh, the budget balance is our fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers, the responsibility to meet the needs of all our children, and that's what we try to do. Now, knowing that we're in a, in a really interesting time with, with, um, cost inflation, um, things that we're seeing in the job workforce, ability to get people. We've had some challenges, uh, and, and I think we've done a nice job of weighing and balancing out what's truly important to the board based on your input and what we want to do moving forward to next year. Next slide. I'm not gonna read all of these. Did, you have these. I did mention that. Next slide. Our goals, we spoke about student achievement, that continues to be at our forefront. And the bottom one, number five, the manufacturing initiative. Uh, you've heard me over the last three years speak to that. And that's something that we want to keep on the table. I had an amazing day today, um, with a colleague. And, and I'm not gonna take a lot of time, but there's just so many opportunities and things that I think our community would truly benefit from with us forging on with this manufacturing initiative and bringing it to North Branford. Next slide. Some of our priorities, preschool is on the table. Uh, we have two sections right now that we know that we're running of Jerome in our FRC building. Our class sizes, that's always constantly the norm that we, you know, have for developing the budget. We feel that smaller class sizes are obviously conducive to individualized instruction and the ability for the student to get to know their instructor on a stronger basis. Ongoing PD, math programs, um, they're listed for the sciences with the AGSS standards. Our digital resources, we've spent a lot of money in getting our technology up to speed and, um, all of our software packages. Next slide. This is where Martha is gonna get into the numbers. Uh, this is what is important, uh, as we move forward and what we're asking for. We will present two different, uh, budget scenarios. The first one will be with the increase that we feel, uh, that we need as a, as an administrative team to move the district forward. The second is the status quo level budget and where that stands. It's important to note that one of the benefits of doing all of the contractual bargaining units together is that we got it done at one time, but we brought all of the bargaining units on except for the teachers, which we'll go into next year, uh, at the same time. So there's, there's a blip in staffing because of that reason, and you'll see that broken out. So that being said, Martha, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Sure. So the proposed operating budget for 2223 right now stands at 4.63%. That is a $1.5 million increase over the current year. And it is made up of a salary increase for all staff, um, which totals $669,000. A benefit increase, which totals $293,000. And all of our other expenditures for programs that do not involve salary or benefits total $539,000. So you can see the different percentages there. Salary and benefits, that increase makes up 2.97% of our current request. The other program expenditures make up 1.66%, which totals the 4.63. Our status quo budget increase is 3.56%, and you'll see where that comes from, um, as we move forward in the presentation.
So will all other expenditures be broken out?
Yes.
Is that, stay tuned.
No, you'll see it.
You'll see. Yes, it is. Stay tuned.
So the other, the other piece for the new board members is that one percentage point equates to just over $300,000. So that makes sense to you when, when you see a 4.6.
Martha, the benefit increase, oh, sorry, I thought you were done. The benefit increase, is that firm? I know sometimes it's not firm at this time of year. Sometimes they say.
So you'll see that as we, as we move forward. So stay tuned.
Okay. Kinda, I'm just sorry.
Go ahead, Bruce. So at a glance, um, you'll see the salaries again. It's an increase of $669,000 for all. Salaries.
We, we did pay your electricity.
Windows up there.
Do you want us to continue your, your?
We could, we could do it. We could do it.
You're going old school.
Yeah, we could do it old school. It's perfectly fine. This way.
An important note I wanted to make sure you were aware of, um, you'll see on page nine that our substitute salary line has increased, our budget allocation request has increased by a little over $78,000 for a total of $329,972 for all substitutes for next year.
Why is that?
This is to have it accurately reflect of what our current expenditures are and what they were last year.
Okay.
So just aside, don't do that. With the substitutes, anytime that we had to quarantine staff members for X amount of days, certified staff members that bring in substitutes, we were constantly doing this this past year with, with COVID, and that had a huge increase.
Yeah, so it basically, nobody's fault, was under budgeted and we're trying to.
Right, and, and.
And that's, and that might flex next year, just to be, so.
We don't, right, I hope, I hope we're.
In the other direction. Yeah, in the other direction.
Because at the same time for this current year, uh, we had a budget of $248,000 and to date, we're, we've already spent $227,000.
Oh, wow.
So we want to increase it proactively for next year because for the past two years now, those in, those expenditures are more. So we would need to.
Yeah, it makes sense.
To increase that.
We, we do have a number of long-term subs in for a variety of reasons. It could be maternity, it could be for medical. So it's been an expensive year.
So the benefit line is actually made up of several different, uh, smaller accounts. Health insurance, the employer's share of social security and Medicare, accrued sick and severance payments, pension contributions, life insurance, unemployment, workman's compensation. Those are what make up your benefit lines. Those lines alone account for just over 15 and a half percent of the, of the proposed budget or $5.2 million. We're actually estimating an 8% increase on the Connecticut State Partnership Plan. This is an increase per our broker, but of course, it is not set in stone. So we will update that as we get a better idea or when the state partnership plan actually posts their renewal rates. So right now, we went with what the broker advised at 8%. However, we were lucky with, there were some decreases in some of those benefit lines, um, mainly life insurance and pension. So the overall increase to benefit as a whole is only 5.88 instead of the, instead of the 8%. Professional development, there, the district continues to invest a significant amount in professional development. It includes professional development for the Homegrown Institute, which is a program through Columbia Teachers College to enhance the reading and writing projects. Uh, there is a focus on illustrative mathematics, and this is at all levels. So to provide resources for teachers to increase the skills and practices that build on an enduring understanding and proficiency of math. And there is also funds set aside for professional development with an emphasis on the Common Core standards and the next generation science standards. Special services. Special services, as you know, encompasses things like our psychologists, our social workers, our special education, our school-to-work program. All of these budgets total up to $6.3 million, which is an increase over the current year of $364,000. The district is proud to have a fully renovated and dedicated space for our 18- to 22-year-olds. But with that new space comes new expenditures, so things like electricity, heating oil, custodial maintenance supplies, things that we didn't have to budget for before are now reflected in this budget because it is a new space. So right now, the estimated cost for utility and facility expenses at the Auger House, and this is only an estimate because, as you know, we've just opened it, is $23,500. And as we move along, we will fine-tune that number. Tuition expenditures for outplace students are estimated to increase by $60,000 over the current year. And the proposed tuition budget itself is $1.8 million. And so special services in total accounts for 6.13% of our entire 2223 proposed budget. We do also have, um, money set aside for instructional supplies and workbooks. Again, there are increases reflected in these lines for the full implementation of illustrative math and the next generation science standards. Both of these programs utilize consumable kits for classrooms and also workbooks. Software budget is a big one. Uh, it contains an accurate reflection of all of our current software in use and of the current software expenditures. There is nothing new in this number. And it looks higher because in previous years, some of the cost was allocated to grants. But we feel that it is appropriate to budget for the true and accurate cost as some of that grant money may be going away in the future. We are also negotiating with some of the software companies to look for multi-year agreements, which we hope would bring in some discounts and reduce the overall cost of the software for the district. Also included in this budget, of course, is our technology. We will continue to invest in a, in the four-year financing agreement that is managed by the town. So each year, the district begins a new, it's called a lease, but it's actually a financing agreement. We, each year we begin a new financial, um, lease for technology, which spans four years. So every year, one lease drops off and a new one comes on. And that allocation is $280,000. From what I've seen, it's been pretty steady over the years at, at that amount. Uh, we will continue focusing on replacing aging equipment and upgrading our current technology with those funds. The next slide is student enrollment.
So looking at student enrollment, if you go to the last, or column and look at the bottom, it has us going down. If you just do a simplistic line-to-line move, year-to-year grade travels, it has us down 26 students over, you know, pre-K through our, our 18- to 22 program. I think we have them included. We do. So looking at the, the town right now, uh, I don't think this is accurate. I don't, I, I don't think we're gonna go down 26 students, to be honest with you. If you're driving through Snake Hill Road and you look at the development in the community, the homes that are being built are not cades. They're four bedrooms, uh, and there's a number of them popping up in our community, which is a good sign. So I think that number's gonna change. Last year, we went into the K, uh, year projecting 100 and.
10. We'll be in at 129.
So we had 129. So if we continue to see this, many, many parents held their children because of COVID and, and waited a year. So, you know, if, if we get that effect again with those fours or fives that were held, that number could fluctuate again from 110 up to whatever. We, we won't know. We've started kindergarten registration, so we should have a more accurate number. Okay?
The next slide represents the status quo budget, and I'll walk you through this so you can, um, see how to read it. So down the left side are your objects and the description of each one of those objects. The next column.
This is the clearest word I've seen in a really long time. Like, I mean, last year was clear, but like, you've cleaned so much up now.
Thank you.
It's so easy to read.
She got a new computer.
It's, it's so easy to read.
It's all a talk.
New software. New software.
Actually, that's not the new software.
It's not. It's, it's.
And honestly, it's just because, yeah, you did it. But it's so easy to read, so yeah, you can explain it, but it's really pretty intuitive.
Thank you.
Well, we have 10 more pages, so wait until.
So, uh, the next column next to the description is the 2122 revised budget.
It is.
Which you see is, is what the town approved us for this current year of $32 million. The next column reflects our proposed budget of $33,937,674, if you want to round. The next column represents the change. The column all the way over to the right is the status quo column. And you're gonna say to me, how did you get that column? Well, basically, it's the smaller number of the two. It's either the 2122 revised budget or the 2223 proposed budget, with the exception of salaries need to go up because those are based on contractual, contractual, um, benefits. Benefits go up because there's nothing we can do about social security taxes and pension contributions and health insurance. So those things, those really aren't a, something that we can change. Professional development is, although we may not want to, we can reduce it. So that's why the number you'll see reflects what we currently have in the 2122 revised budget. So when you go all the way down the list, you come to the status quo budget of $33,589,134, which is a $1.1 million increase instead of the $1.5 million increase. And that is where you get the 3.56%.
So this is great, but what I wanna know is, what's in the proposed budget that's?
You're gonna see that.
So when you turn the page.
Let me see. I said we had 10 more pages. Come on.
The difference between those two budgets is $348,000. And what I did for you is list those areas where we are asking for increases that, um, we feel would benefit the students and our educational program the best. So you'll see professional development is increased by $39,000 to the proposed ask of $87,000. The officials.
Some of these are minimal, but we include them.
But when you add and subtract everything.
Officials.
So you're.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, athletics.
Now, we went down to the nitty-gritty for.
Okay, got it.
Right, what we usually charge, and if we add new sports and they get an extra, like, whatever.
Grounds maintenance, I mean, if we don't get the increase, yeah, there are some things we can cut, but it may not look as, you know, as nice as you'd want it to. Uh, purchase services.
What about purchasing, purchase services?
Purchase service, a lot of that is actually for facilities. So when the people come in and do the, um, cleanings for the, you know, the different, or the, the maintenance on the HVAC systems or the fire alarm testing or the elevator, things like that. Those are what we call a purchase service. Leases would, uh, consist of the technology lease that I just spoke about. It would also consist of our postage machine leases and our copiers. So those are the items that are in there.
So, oh, actual postage, I guess.
Actual postage. Uh, the, as you know, postage has gone up. We've significantly reduced the amount of postage that we use because a lot of our things now we can send electronically. But there are still employees who receive their check through mail and have elected not to do direct deposit. Or there's things that we have to send by US Mail certified or other, other things. So that's the postage line. Printing and binding, that's very minimal, but we included it. Printing and binding would be anything that the, um, principals need to,
Yeah.
need to do with their buildings. Instructional, this is where you'll see the increase for all, for all of the new materials that are needed for the new programs we just spoke about. Custodial maintenance supplies, cost has just gone up overall. And again, there is some money in there now for the new Auger House building, which we didn't have to clean before separately. So now we are, you know, we have to order all the paper supplies, the soap products and things for that building as well.
Can I ask a dumb question? I mean, I was just like, what's the difference between textbooks and instructional?
So textbooks, according to the, to the state, are the actual.
Hardcover.
Books. Um, so under textbooks, you could have the actual hardcover books or you could have a workbook.
Okay.
An instructional supply could be those things that you use in the classroom to teach the students. So it could actually be your chemicals for your chem, your chem lab, um, the things that you're dissecting in biology or anatomy.
How about the digital? Do we use digital textbooks, digital?
They have the opportunity through, through our Chromebooks, uh, the students have the opportunity to.
I've seen di, yeah, I've seen some digital stuff, but that's not in there. That's.
That would be under.
Instruction. Oh, under software?
Yes, 695.
Page 13, where that.
So it's kinda scattered, like it's.
Yeah, and, and the reason why we do this is be, because we follow the national standard or the uniform chart of accounts. And these objects are the objects that I have to use to report to the state and federal government. So that's why our account numbers reflect this. And that's why, um, all the reporting that you'll see reflects this. And you'll see it in our new software as well. We've, we've kept the, we've kept it.
Okay. That makes sense.
Um, so again, going down the, the list, periodicals are those things that, they're like Scholastic magazine. Things that the kids use, but they're more of a magazine kind of item. Technology supply is anything. It could be mice, it could be, um, it could be, yeah, that kind of mice. Uh, it could be the extension cords, keyboards, anything that Bruce would need to make sure that our technology or computer equipment is, is running the way it should be. Office supply, pretty self-explanatory. There was a significant increase, as you know, um, on all paper. I saw somewhere last week that they said expect copy paper to rise, um, by at least 10%. Other supply are those instructional things that don't wear out. So they will last more than a year. So it could be a calculator, it could be a model, it could be a math, it could be some kind of,
Okay.
um, manipulat, manipu.
Manipulative.
Thank you. Um, you know, maybe a, a model of a. Organ or something. Yeah.
Science, yeah.
Software, again, self-explanatory. It's the biggest increase here. But as we mentioned, it is reflective of everything we are currently using. And dues and fees, that's just the things that the buildings pay for to actually send the kids to different kinds of meets or to have teachers belong to organizations and things like that. So all of those things total the three forty-eight, five thirty-nine.
The proposed and the status quo aren't that much different.
No, they're not.
Or it's like...
You know, we, we, we had great conversations about this, and it, and it comes down to a number. And for me, as a superintendent, to see a number like four-point-one-five-six, the first shock value is, "Oh my gosh, what's going on here?" But reflecting on what we've lived through and, and the increases that we're seeing on a day-to-day basis, when you look at the status quo, we're at three-point-five-six, just to, just to stay even, to stay level where we're at. And it's, it's the reality of it.
And, and a huge part of it is all of the contracts coming back.
And we did a great job with those. I'm sorry. We did.
No, but you're, you're gonna, you're gonna pay, meaning...
We did.
And it's the price you're gonna give us.
We're a service organization, so that's where most of your expenditures are at, in the people.
It's salary.
Yeah.
Salary and benefits.
Let's back up to page fifteen for a sec. I'm looking at six, what is it, six twenty-one and six twenty-three. I think it's six twenty-three, so...
Natural gas?
Oh, wait, yeah. Like, these are, I mean, are we expecting that to spend less this time? I mean, the prices...
So what we, what I did was I went back and looked at what we're currently budgeted for and what we currently, I'm sorry, what we actually spent last fiscal year, so twenty-twenty-one. And based on where we're budgeted, we actually had a little bit of, of room there.
Good, good. And is that the same?
We've been working very hard the past few years to correctly code all of our expenditures and to tighten up on the allocations for each object. And I think in doing that, it's, it's made some of our requests more accurate than they've ever been before.
Is that kind of the same exercise whenever you see, you see all these drops? It's kind of the same exercise you're going through?
Well, things like tuition, special ed public, which is five sixty-one, you'll see a decrease there. But that is based on our, our in, actual anticipated students for next year.
Projecting forward, right. Okay. And we always pray for one winters.
Yeah. What's the breakdown? We, is it gas over here or where?
We're, we're split.
We're split, right?
In town. John, the only, the only oil left is this building in Totucket. Oil.
The fuel oil is in Northwood. There's no gas up here.
Right.
It's out here. All the rest of our facilities are around the...
John, Auger House is oil, though, right?
Auger House is oil.
Is oil, yeah.
And it's sixteen hundred square feet, eighteen hundred square feet?
Auger House.
Auger House, roughly?
Yeah, roughly.
So we should be able to heat and cool that for three to four hundred a month?
We put, we put the best energy efficient...
And we could.
Food supplies and...
Yeah. We should be good.
The next slide is something that you've seen before. Basically, just breakdowns all, it break downs all of our expenditures into different categories. Salary, benefit, tuition, buildings and grounds, learning programs, support, technology, transportation, and administration. These lines, the only place that you'll see salary is in the salary lines. And I've noted on the bottom there what is included in each category. So if you were curious, it's, it's all right there, basically. Administrative are things that are really not centered on the actual student. So it would be legal, central office, things like that.
Yeah, the pie charts are, make it nice and clear.
The next slide, where does the budget increase come from? Just laying it out in a different, different way. We took the increases for each of those categories and laid it out in a visual so that you could see it.
Transportation, so that's just Daco. Was there more to it?
There is athletic transportation. There is special ed transportation. Sometimes we need to use a vendor that is not our current provider. And then there's also the regular education and special education bus contract. Currently, yes. The pie chart lays it out again in another visual so that you can see how big each piece of the pie is. Next slide, proposed budget by location. We, again, we broke out in a visual by, by building. So you'll see Jerome Harrison is the reddish number there. Totucket Valley is the green. NVIS is the purple. The high school is the blue, and the district is the yellow. And again, district is made up of those things that reach beyond one building. So professional services, technology, transportation, benefits, insurance, and professional services, that is what is under district.
So is that the last piece of the capitol?
This is capital now.
Can we wait for capital and talk about the budget?
Sure.
Because I would rather do it in...
Yes, separate.
Let's talk about it, because then we might be able to vote on that and get one part back, yeah?
Seems good.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
So this is how it kind of goes for voting on, on the budget. First, if you have any questions, ask them.
I have two questions. One, for professional development, there is a very large increase. Is that because, like, the original budget was from having the one professional development day a month? And now we're budgeting it with the additional ones? Is that...
Tracy will answer that.
So the professional development budget really is already what's happening and has been happening, but it's been covered by grants.
Okay.
And now that grant funding is, is being reduced significantly from our grant that's at the middle school and some of the beginning career early by us.
Okay.
Vicky, the Wednesdays are not costing us additional money. That's in the teacher's contract.
I wasn't sure if we were bringing people... Right. I wasn't sure if we were bringing people in with training and if that was costing...
They, they do do that at times.
Okay.
One, once a month, and then I gave the additional day for the staff and the students a...
Okay.
A, a break to, you know, all the strain of what we've been through for twenty months.
And then my other question was, the technology supply increases quite a bit, too.
Bruce?
Basically, just moving things around. They were paid for in other places last time.
Okay.
We're basically covering, just like I was saying before, all the little parts that were out. That placement of mice and adapters and all kinds of parts that the kids break, screens broken, keyboards damaged, all those, all that was in the technology supply.
But there were other places, so that's why it looks like it's such a big jump when we see it here. Is that what you're saying?
Just go back to the right category.
It's aligned underneath.
Right. It's just now that you see it in one section, it pops up way higher.
So it was just...
There's a line item for the auditorium that was non-existent before. Replace the lighting equipment, the gel, the carpet, bulbs, batteries, all kinds of things that were accounted for in the technology supply.
Oh, okay.
And just for, for our new board members with fifteen-hundred-plus students in the district, for the Chromebooks, we start in grade with grade two. And grade one have...
Grade one in kindergarten have iPads.
iPads. So every student in K through twelve and beyond have a...
Pre-K as well.
Pre-K, oh, pre-K is the, they're probably quicker than I am, but... So that, we have quite a few over fifteen-hundred devices out in the district that are serviced by, obviously, Bruce oversees it, and then he has a team of three that are in the buildings handling all of the maintenance and updating when they break, and we have to service them and turn them over every four years.
Thank you.
I just wanna say to you that Tracy has done wonders getting in grants for different programs for us, and now they're drying up, but...
But she keeps her eyes open, though.
Yeah, she does.
You know, when they come, she always buys for them and is really good about it, so, thank you. When we have to, and we see an increase sometime, it's, it's simply because the grant is... But the grants have dried up. You never know when she's gonna pop up with another one for us, so we keep our eye on it, so...
She gets us all the free money she can.
It's never free, though.
I know.
It runs out.
So there are two budgets we can, we can go down. We could vote for the proposed budget or the status quo budget. Or if there's something in particular that we, we as a board really don't like, we can ask for another amount, because we'll be asking for a dollar amount, and that's kind of what we talked about it now. Like, do we want to do the status quo, which simply keeps us where we're at? Or do we want to put forth to the town council the proposed budget? And either way, we might not get a dollar more, right? But it's our job to say, "Hey, this is what we support as a board, and we believe it, and then we have to go and support our position to town council and tell them why." So it's something that we need to make sure we really understand, so that's why I really encourage questions. There have been years that I voted for the proposed budget. There's been years I have voted, you know, I, I asked for a status quo, and there's been years I have asked for a flatline on, on, for the budget. So it's, it's changed every year. So Mars, do you wanna add? Because you've been on the floor a while.
No, you're a little while. A while, a little while. No, you're, you're spot on. I mean, it's up to the town. The town council cannot give us a dollar amount less than what we received last year. They cannot by statute do that. But they can give us nothing. They can keep what they gave us last year. They, the only thing that they can line item veto on us is the capital.
And that's not even in the...
We haven't done the capital yet. We'll do that next. They'll give us a dollar amount, then it'll be up to Scott and the administration to go back and say, "Okay, well, they, they gave us this amount. Where are we gonna cut? What are we gonna do?" And they'll work as an administrative team and come back to us and tell us what, what they think that they can do with and without. I mean, when you look at what they're asking for above status quo, it's not much. It's really not much. I mean, I'll open up the discussion. I would certainly be in favor of the proposed budget.
I have a few questions, if I could.
Sure, absolutely.
For, for the salary increase, how, is that kind of like a...
It's contract.
Contract.
It's contract, right? So we probably see that, whatever the percentage is year-over-year kind of deal, or is it...
So...
It's gonna increase year-over-year, based on the contracts.
For the three-year contracts?
Sure.
So ballpark average, we could say two percent roughly for each part in the unit over the next three years.
Sometimes...
And that's included. Yeah, the only one that's not is the existing teacher's contract that we're in, which is coming up, so that's in there.
Sometimes when we do the contracts, depending upon the year, you know, there may be a raise in year one, nothing in year two, and a raise in year three. So that's why it fluctuates from year to year, the salary increase, and it, it fluctuates from union to union as well.
Same, is that kind of like the benefits as well?
Benefits, is that the, the luck of the draw of the state?
Oh, right, that's right.
Yeah, yeah. That's the majority of it, yeah.
For workers' compensation, how does that break down? Page ten, is that...
The workers' compensation is reflected in the, in the benefit law.
It is in that, okay.
Yes, and the...
So it's like an additional, like, we've seen a lot more falls and axes and spills, like...
The, the estimate that we're using for a worker's comp is, again, directly from our broker.
Okay.
So when we get the actual, we will fine-tune that number. But right now, the estimate we're using is from our broker, based on their best guess.
Okay, okay. What's the participation rate for professional development, or is that mandatory? For, for the, the professional development piece, is that mandatory? Or it says offer. I don't know if that's like, all teachers are required to do.
Yeah, if it was particip, what's the participation rate?
So by, by state statute, we have to provide one hundred and eighty hours of professional development. And we do that plus, as well as provide it for specific programs, as well as any specific needs that are dictated by INPs or Biblehorses.
Okay. And Bruce, I got a question for you. The, the systems piece, are you, are you asking for more systems or just...
When you say system, you...
Like, different software packages, you say?
No.
Okay.
I take that back. We may be looking at two-step authentication for staff.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry?
Cybersecurity.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
We're looking at new costs with the town. We'll have to do it, and we'll have a number in the next...
Week.
Week.
That's the nature of the beast, though, right?
Yeah, we really have to. They have us worked for handcuffs.
And how many times you go to the gas pump and you can't use your car and...
Or, or if, if they do match our system, and then we have to pay the ransom to get our system back or change every operating system we have, so...
On fourteen, student enrollment, have you seen a year-over-year decrease?
We're seeing a twenty-six student decrease, pre-K through, so you would average one to two kids per grade, so...
Yes, though, see the answer to your question.
So like, say if I did a seven-year run, would you see a...
We're, we're flat.
Flat, okay.
We're flat. So NEAS, or NESD, excuse me, does our evaluations for student demographics over time. And we go get like a thirty-year, and right now, we're, we're flat with the last few years.
Yeah, you made a good analogy.
We've gone down in, over the past ten years, but we're starting to, to level out, yeah.
I'm great. Yeah, you made a good analogy with the house.
Yeah, they're, and we're seeing...
But Scott, isn't it rumored that with the new high school, we'll get a lot more...
If you build it, they will come.
Yeah, so we might say more.
Well, you might get some kids from private schools that, you know, may come back to North Ramford.
Scale to dreams.
Well, I'm not gonna get off on my manufacturing, okay, right now, but I'm really excited about manufacturing, if you couldn't tell. Our, the largest number of students in the district go to vinyl tech. So we have probably thirty-plus students at vinyl tech. If we develop this manufacturing opportunity for our students, I think students would be hard-pressed to drive by that new high school and turn the corner with their manufacturing somewhere close by and still wanna go to any of the certain schools that offer it. So vinylists are our largest number that exit the district. Our numbers for our, the private Catholic schools are low right now, and Lyndon for the ag program, but not a great deal of students are leaving to go there. So vinyl is the one.
And that's it?
So, Marcy, do you want to put a motion together for the proposed budget?
Yes, absolutely.
And then do you see where that falls?
Sure.
This is the proposed, not the status quo, so just keep that in mind while you're...
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the superintendent's twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget in the amount of thirty-three million, nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars, eighty-nine cents.
A second? Go call, Mary.
Chairman Papaholzer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio? Yes. Secretary Siena?
Yes.
Janice Salmo?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Yes.
Tim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Alonso?
Yes.
Do you want to have a look?
I do. John is still here. And I'm only gonna bring him forward if I need to, because it's, it's really a quite list. So for twenty-two, twenty-three, phase two of the unit, unit ventilators, we spoke to earlier. And, and those are broken out as we get to page twenty-two, so I'll just walk you through them, and then I'll pause them out. The upgrade lighting at TBS was the second capital project that we were interested in. The TBS and Jerome paving, if you have youngsters and you've driven through our parking lots, they haven't been done in quite some time. They take a beating, obviously, with now what's being put down on the roads and the swing, obviously, you know how this works. We're really in dire need of some paving in those two locations. And then auditorium updates is to be determined. I've, I've had conversations for the past several months regarding the condition... I've had conversations for the past several months regarding the condition of the auditorium seats. They need to be reupholstered. The arm handles need to be sanded and stained. The flooring underneath the seating needs to be sanded and painted. We have new carpet in there within the last few years, John, we replaced that carpet. But those other things, we're trying to cost out now with a company we've met. So I don't have a real hard number, I can try to get that number for you and then we can come back and revisit it at another date. And I don't want to put a time on it because I know you're.
I'm having a hard time getting them to come back and give us the number.
The number.
I mean, we can do it this year because we don't.
We can wait.
We can wait a year, relentlessly, aggressively work on it, so.
But we, it's something just as everyone, so you're aware, we need to again, we can get through next year. It's not going to fall apart, but we don't want to get it out too far because that's the pride of our community. We go in there for events and things we want to take care of.
Here's here's my comment. Can we ask, once we get our numbers, can we ask the town council if there's any money in that fund? I mean, I know we haven't rented out the auditorium in the last two years due to COVID. But over the years, we've rented out that auditorium, the money comes in, it doesn't go to us, it goes to the town.
That's what paid for the carpeting.
Right, that's exactly what paid for the carpeting. So if we get to the point, you know, soon, well, not if, when, and we get to the point where we can rent that auditorium out again, you know, maybe we give it a year and then there's some rental monies in there and then it's not really coming out of, you know, they don't have to increase the mill rate or anything to do some of the stuff.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Because they've been they've been pretty good about, you know,
Other.
you know, giving us stuff for for the auditorium through that through that group.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
So we're hoping to we're hoping to do soft rentals coming up.
Okay.
And we've held our concerts in there in a very prescribed program and we're looking.
Also included in that is we replaced all the lobby floor.
Yeah, the tile.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The lobby floor, as you know, was put out and replaced originally.
Right.
And because we had one of the building which we which we saw and we have we have even the floors overboarded out. That lobby entranceway has to be reconfigured.
So John, will you get a whole package together?
I'm trying my best.
Bring it to us as soon as you have it and then we'll strategize how.
Even the tile people won't come back.
Yeah, even I've had three or four town contractors come on, look at it, and I have had one come back to me with a price and I hounded.
Is that anything we can do ourselves in-house?
Uh.
Or is it beyond our expertise?
We could, I mean, it's something we can't do. It has to be taken up, has to be ground down, relayed down. It's something we have it done in the past. So I I mean, I can work, I can work it up, but then let me know what it would be for us to do it. And then get a contract, I can't promise.
I'm going to wait for a bid price on that. It's not that I don't trust you with tile, the vinyl I'm really good with, this is heavy slate.
Well, we we we, put this way, it's often ironed up.
Yeah, okay.
No, I don't say, I don't trust John doing that.
Yeah, I would.
I want to be very cautious with.
I mean, I would like to, I would like to see a contractor do it and we want to know if it's.
Yeah, exactly.
But yeah, sooner or later, I'm sure I can get somebody.
Okay, okay, just keep us on top of that. So I do have some questions about capital. I'm completely fine with the paving, right? I see that, got it? Good, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But when we were talking earlier about the lighting, John said that that was going to be covered by the excess money for the water tower, so I don't see why we're asking for that.
So.
We have to pay it to make it stop.
We already have it.
Well, here's the thing, if we can get, John, if we can get in public the council to verbally commit to that sixty thousand savings, we can pull it off right then.
Exactly, I have to tell them, remember, you have to put a hundred up front. You have to buy the lighting and the contractors who install it at a hundred dollar. Once that's gone, water electric will give you back your forty percent, but you still have to put up a hundred.
Right, but my point is, is we already have sixty-seven thousand of excess for the water tower.
Right, and when we finish that, we will have somewhere around sixty thousand.
So we'll call it sixty, so why are we asking for sixty? Shouldn't we just ask for forty and then the town can take it back from us?
That would be how you want to present it to the top boss.
What I don't like is when we ask for extra money and we don't need it and then it's sitting there. Like, I just want to be transparent with them.
I think if we explain it the way it is, I think they would just buy into it because they know it's not going to cost them anything.
Yeah, I just don't want to ask for three hundred thousand when we need a hundred and fifty, you know what I'm saying?
But John, the the key part of the conversation has to be that sixty thousand in savings is going to this project.
And they already, if you remember last, if you remember, when we talked to Tom Council last year about that, they did say, yes, you would be able to reappropriate that money towards another maintenance.
So so this is, so this is what I'm saying.
Yes.
We're not asking for additional sixty grand, we're saying, can we reappropriate? So it's not asking for more.
You want to reappropriate that sixty towards my.
But I think we might have to ask for it. But when we go to present the budget, John can certainly say that, say we asked for it, but if you're allowing us to repurpose the money from this, then we can cut, then we can we can take sixty thousand off of our capital request.
Yep, exactly, so I think that's how.
We should ask for it, but.
Ask for it with the purpose, because they can take the sixty grand, yeah, it's a shell.
Yeah.
But we want them to know we have the sixty.
Right.
Let's keep the sixty to reappropriate if they don't need to have it asked, okay.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And then we finish ventilators. Um, my note is that we did a hundred and nine, right? And it's going to be seventy-five for labor, right? But we had an extra twenty-four in that line, so it should be one sixty, not one eighty-four. Right, so it's the same thing that we have to ask them, that we have this twenty-four thousand left over. Can we reappropriate it?
It's got to be in public session with the with a vote and a commitment to do that.
And then that should be a problem with this earmark built up in valley.
And it's it's the same project.
It's the same project.
So we don't like, we're not, we only need one sixty, four five zero really. So however that's going to happen, that needs to happen.
So I I think we do it the same way. I think we ask for it and say, you know, that money's left over, we can knock that off of there and we don't need this one.
Yeah, so Martha, I don't know how you.
No, you can write it up, so.
You set up like, so like, this is what we're asking.
I'll put the total less.
This is what we have, you just need to reappropriate because you really only need.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, perfect, then I'm okay with capital.
Everybody can.
Did everyone follow the? Okay.
So when we need a second motion, if there's no questions and everyone's good, obviously, we have a second.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three capital budget request in the amount of three hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. With those little caveats.
Can you say it with the caveats? Can you make a motion with the caveats somehow?
That's what I was going to ask, is if you're asking for something.
So that you had had.
To approve the amount of three hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars with the hopes that the sixty thousand dollars left from.
Well, say with the commitment, or sixty thousand dollars left over.
The sixty thousand dollars left over from the um.
The JHS.
Cooling tower, and the cooling tower could be re.
Ventilators, ventilators.
And ventilators could be reappropriate, could be reappropriated. Be reappropriated towards the capital amount and reduced by that amount.
Yeah, that's mine, that's complicated, but I understand it.
Okay, Mary, we're going to have to say this.
Got it, made sense?
Scott, you know.
Yeah, like, I don't, yeah.
This is like a big circle.
Maybe we should write it out because she can have it after the meeting because that's what should really last.
You didn't get it, Mary? Come on.
Not yet, I don't know.
Okay, so I'm making a motion to approve the superintendent's twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three capital budget request in the amount of three hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars with with the request of the leftover sixty thousand dollars from the cooling tower. Be reappro.
And the twenty-four thousand.
And the twenty-four thousand from.
From the ventilators.
From the ventilators. Be reappropriated towards this and reduce and reduce by the three hundred ninety-four thousand, four fifty, reduced by that amount.
That last few words was really fast.
I'm sorry.
Reappropriate.
The sixty thousand from the cooling tower.
And the twenty-four thousand from the ventilators.
Be reappropriated.
Towards the capital and reduce the three hundred ninety-four thousand by that amount, by eighty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars.
Does that make sense?
Approximately, because we don't know for sure, yeah.
I'll just listen to the tape.
Twenty-six times, yeah.
I'll second. Okay, let's go to voting.
Chairman Papa Holster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Yes. Secretary Siena?
Yes.
Janabol Salma?
Yes.
Zachary Canada?
Yes.
Kim Dawson?
Yes.
Victoria Alonso?
Yes.
Okay, do we have public comment? Anyone here for public comment, anyone?
So are we going to cancel our next two budget workshops?
Unless you want to get together.
I actually can't handle the next two budget workshops, the next time we come together is.
The board?
Yeah.
February board. So firstly, and most importantly, thank you for your support and for diving into the budget for our new board members. You have two leaders that are always available to help you. Don't hesitate to reach out to them with questions. I know there'll be a lot of emails coming. And channel things through so everyone can see. And then and then we'll get back to the chair, vice chair, so that you have that information. And then all the board members, it just makes it easier for all of us. And thanks for your support.
It's February.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
The seventeenth, February seventeenth is our next motion. What?
What, I'm voting on a motion, you got a second, you need a second. Um, what's going on? Didn't you just make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah. Thank you, Fiona. I was coming up to date.
Senator.
All in favor?
All in favor. I don't know what's going on over there. We're new.
Completion, completion.